Acquah, Miss Present, I will now call this meeting to order. It is 5:00 PM. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. I will now turn the floor over to Dr. Sonya Naisi, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for our operational support, who will present a budget workshop along with a workshop related to the redemption of the unlimited tax refunding bonds, Series 2013.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to start out by explaining that Mr. Brian Grubbs, who works for SAMCo, serves as the District's Financial Advisor, and typically, Mr. Grubbs is here to present this information to the Board. He had a prior commitment and was not able to be here tonight, so I will go through the information with you. So, as part of managing the district's debt, we continuously look for opportunities to save money and basically reduce the district's debt burden. And so, we typically look for these opportunities in two ways. We look for lower interest rates, when maybe can we refund our debt, just like you would do with your home mortgage? And then, we also look for opportunities when our bonds are callable and we have a small amount that's left on a bond series and we have sufficient fund balance in our debt service or our INS fund to pay down that debt. So, to start this discussion, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So, in order to have that opportunity, the Board must take action to authorize us to either refund debt or to have a bond redemption. So, first of all, I'm going to start out here with, this is a chart that shows our current outstanding debt. So, you can see all of the debt that's outstanding and payable from 2023 through 2041. The blue portion of those graphs, that represents the principal that's owed on our debt, and then the yellow portion, that would be the interest that's owed. One of the things that's unique about Galena Park ISD and the way that we have structured our debt is that we have very flat structure. So, you can see how that structure goes out very flat. So, that's favorable for us because what happens is whenever we have increases in property values, as we have had here, that gives us the opportunity to raise additional money in our INS or our debt service fund so that we can take advantage and pay down debt early. And we've done that on a number of occasions. The other thing that we would typically point out on this slide is we would go back to May 2016, whenever the last time that the Board had a successful bond referendum. And at that time, for our projection purposes, we thought that for 2022-23, our property value would be at $8.5 billion, and instead, we're now at $12.2 billion. And so, instead of a maximum rate of .44, which we told the voters that we would have at that time, we're actually been at a rate of .31, a little less, or a little over .31 for our 2022-23. So, you can see, we've been able to service the debt that we issued on that $290 million of bonds, and we've been able to do it at a rate much lower than what we had originally told the taxpayers. And again, that's primarily because we've had such an increase in property values here in our district. So, on the next two slides, I'm not going to go through each one of these individually, but these are examples of where we have taken advantage of the opportunities to either refund or refinance our outstanding bonds, or we have had an early redemption. We've used our fund balance to pay down debt. So, you can see that beginning in 2007, we've had a favorable interest rate market. We've been able to take advantage of that. And you can see each one of these series, that whenever they become callable, we've taken action. And total, if I'm going to go to the second slide, if you look at the total, we've been able to save the taxpayers of Galena Park ISD almost $44 million by taking advantage of these refunding and redemption opportunities. So, moving forward with what we're considering for tonight is we have our 2013 series, which has become callable in this current year. We have a principal balance of $1,825,000. So, again, the option is, once it becomes callable, is there an interest rate market that we would want to refinance that debt, or do we have sufficient fund balance to pay that debt down? So, if you look at our INS fund balance, we do have sufficient fund balance to pay that debt down. If we were to, the Board were authorized this redemption and pay that debt off, we would have a fund balance of about $3.9 million, which, again, this is our debt service INS fund balance, which is more than enough fund balance. There's a recommended 10% of our maximum total annual bond payment, and that meets that threshold. So, the last slide I want to show you is, this is a preliminary bond redemption cash analysis chart, and really, there's just a couple of columns I want you to look at. It's a lot of information there. If you look at column five, you can see a grand total at the bottom of column five, $340,000. That's what we would save in total interest earnings if we went ahead and paid this debt off early. And then, also, the other three columns to look at are columns nine, 10, and 11. You can see, if we assume moving forward that we had a $12 billion property value and that we collected it at about 99%, our maximum, you can see how our tax rate starts decreasing after this year. This current year, we're at .31. That tax rate would go down as we move forward. And again, that's well below the .44 that taxpayers in the community were told whenever the bond, the 2016 bond was proposed. So, that's all the information I have. So, if you have any questions for me, I can answer them at this time about this bond redemption.
There being no questions, thank you, Dr. Naisi.
Okay.
There being no other business before the Board at this time? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Okay, all right. So, now, I'm going to proceed into a workshop to talk about where we're at in our planning for the 23-24 budget. We did have a workshop prior to our made Board meeting, and so, really, what I have here tonight for you is updates that have occurred since that meeting. We'll talk about those updates. Also, we're going to look at some compensation plan information. We do have the compensation plan proposed on the agenda for later tonight, also the projections that use that, and then the next steps. So, our, most of the new information that we have, we do have our rates. They were finally approved by the TRS Board in late May. They had delayed action on the insurance rates. We did see some increases, unfortunately. Those increases ranged from a low of 6.8% up to 7.2% on average for people who participate in those plans. And if I gave that to you on an annual basis, it's a low of $762 average rate increase up to a $999 average rate increase. And our other health-related benefits, we did have a small increase on our dental plans. Those increased, increases ranged from $2 up to $14, and that's a per month amount. We did also have a positive change in a recommendation. We have an employee benefit committee that reviews different employee options, and they did recommend a change in the indemnity carrier. That will result in a savings of approximately $2 to $9 per month for the employees that participate in that. This budget that's being recommended tonight also recommends that we consider continuing an employee assistance program that we've been offering for several years now, and then also telemedicine services, and that's for our employees that don't have insurance through the active care plan. The other changes were on the legislative topic. So, we had a session that was going on at the time. We were looking at House Bill 100. We had this record surplus at the state level, and we had received lots of promises. Early in the session, that public education was going to receive significant amounts of money and that teachers were going to receive pay increases. Well, at the end of the session, none of that happened. So, what we did end up with was a state budget that was passed. There were some very small minor increases in state aid that were included in that state budget, and we do have some school safety legislation that has some money attached to it. And then, we do have some small economic development bills that will also be beneficial for school districts. But what we did not get was any significant increases in school finance, teacher compensation. There was also controversy at the end of the session over property tax relief, but the good news was that vouchers did not pass. So, without the new legislation that we were hoping, so when you take House Bill 100 out of the picture, now, what we had to consider was current law. And so, when we're operating under current law, here's the estimates that we use, and I just can't emphasize enough to everybody how these are estimates and estimates only. Average daily attendance, we're using information from the current year. We have not received the final ADA counts for this year, so this is what we're estimating where we're going to end the year out, and we're carrying that same number forward to next year. Also, on property values, we're estimating $11.9 billion, just shy of $12 billion. Again, this is an estimate that was provided to us by Harris County Appraisal District at the end of April, and typically, what we have seen is that with Harris County Appraisal Districts, those numbers can move. They can move up or they can move down depending on litigation. Based on that, before, we did not show you a maintenance and operations tax rate. This maintenance and operations tax rate is lower because as property values increase, the amount that we can tax is lowered. The rest of the information in here is the same. So, on our 2000, the 23-24, the proposed compensation plan, the one that we looked at primarily was a 3% general pay increase. That has a starting teacher salary of $64,450, and then $2,000 for all of our returning experienced teachers. And then, of course, everybody would receive a 3% of midpoint that relates to the pay structure that their position is tied to. So, the cost of this increase right now is estimated at $5.5 million. If you look at the budget projections, this is different than what we looked at last time. Last time, we were looking at House Bill 100. We were looking at a considerable deficit at that time. And again, I want to talk about one of the main reasons that relates to is the state comptroller values. So, we had an appeal of our 2022 state comptroller values, and what happened was that the State Comptroller's Office reported pretty significantly wrong values to the state, and they did this for 2022, but it has an effect also on 2023 and the projections that we were using as of April. So, we, there was an error that was discovered in the data that the Harris County Appraisal District submitted to the State Comptroller's Office, and it was about $900 million was the error. So, by the time that we accounted, made that correction in the template and carried that forward to the next year, our deficit looks a lot better than what it originally looked like. So, now, we're projecting a deficit of a little less than $2 million, where previously it was a little bit north of $8 million. So, that's good news. Unfortunate that that error happens and that we didn't have good numbers in our templates, but we're happy that it turned out to where it's positive for the district and we'll have more revenue than we expected. So, our next steps are, in July, we will receive updated values from the Harris County Appraisal District, and we hope they're correct. Because we base a lot of calculations on what the Harris County Appraisal District provides for us, and the Texas Education Agency is actually going to use their July estimate to calculate the tax rate on. So, it is important that it's correct, and we wish that we could emphasize that enough to the Appraisal District. In August, we do have some required publications. We'll have a required public hearing. There will be Board action to adopt the general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets. Those are the three funds the Board is required to adopt budgets for. And then, we'll receive another update from Harris County Appraisal District at the end of August. Then, we go into September. That's when everybody can start using their budgets. This year is going to be a little bit different on tax rate because there was a special session that was called, and so, what's been decided as of right now is you will need to adopt a proposed tax rate that's based on current law in October, and then, there's a proposed referendum that would go to the public, and the public will get to decide if they want to opt for an additional 10 pennies reduction, basically, on their taxes. And if that public referendum passes, then all the tax rates will be reset to 10 pennies lower than what you adopt in October. So, could be interesting as far as getting tax bills out next year to taxpayers. So, that's where we're at on budget planning. So, does anybody have any questions about that?
No questions, and sorry for trying to cut you off earlier. I apologize.
That's okay.
Great job, and thank you, Dr. Naisi.
All right, thank you.
There being no other business before the Board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:16 PM. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:16 p.m. Acquorum is present. I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice of for this meeting as authorized by section 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Opens Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the board will now be held. The time is 5:21 p.m.
Executive session is adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is six oh eight P M. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I know we as far as a move, we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to elect Noe Asparza for the office of president of the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year?
I, Norma Hernandez, move we approve to elect Noe Asparza for the office of president as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Norma Hernandez and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to elect Ramon Garza for the office of Vice President of the Galena Park? Wait, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Is there a motion to elect Norma Hernandez for the office of Vice President of the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve to elect Norma for the office of Vice President as presented.
Is there a second?
I, I, Noe Asparza, second the motion.
Okay. A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? Noe, sorry. A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Noe Asparza. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to elect Ramon Garza for the Office of Secretary of the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
I, Noe Asparza, move we approve to elect Ramon Garza for the Office of Secretary as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Noe Asparza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is one four seven zero five Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero one five. The time is six eleven P M. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by section five five one point seven one two, five five one point zero eight four, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in a silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for the, your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per policy, B E D local, may address the board regarding matters of concern or interests to the district, other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions or opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of the speakers. Please understand that a lack of response from board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The Vice President of the Board will be the designated timekeeper. Dr. John Moore, will you please step up to the podium?
I'll just do my comments right out here. So, I got a little poem I want to read, and it'll be brief, and it'll be self-explanatory. There are heroes who walk among us, never looking for glory or praise. They don't seek recognition for their thoughtful and caring ways. Living lives of deep commitment, providing for those who they hold dear, steadfast with a quiet strength through times of laughter and tears. You are a person like that, the most selfless being by far. So Terry, we'd like to thank you for being the hero that you are for Galena Park I S D. Tonight will be our last official board meeting in Galena Park.
Give a, give a, we'll give a minute to dry up our eyes. All right. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Board Member Noe Asparza, and the pledges of the, to the American and Texas flags will be led by all of the Board of Trustees. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags.
If you'll please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. Father God, we thank you for all you've given us and the many blessings in our lives. Where, wherever we go, let us spread love, joy, peace, goodness, and faithfulness. We ask for your guidance and strength during our deliberations tonight. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom to make the best decisions for our community, staff, and more importantly, our children. Give us patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask all of this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. I would like to welcome Judge Joe Stevens, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three, who will now administer the oath of office to re-elected incumbent for position six, Noe Asparza, re-elected incumbent for position seven, Norma Hernandez, and the ceremonial oath of office to newly elected trustee Jose Jimenez for position five, who was officially sworn in on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Good evening.
He'll, he'll do one.
It's an honor to be here back in my roots where I started. Before I start, I'd like to, one, I gotta give a shout out to my commissioner, Mr. Baker Garcia. Please, can you hear me? I would like to give a missive, I am just my predecessor, a big shout out, just Mike Carr, for arguing. Tell me everything I know. This is truly an honor to do this tonight. I want to give this board a big shout out and give you guys your flowers and superintendent Moore. I was able to tag along a couple of months ago to the National School Board Conference in Orlando. And this school board, in nine years I served here, we did never get a hundred percent attendance. This school board had one hundred percent attendance at the Orlando School Board Conference, the National School Board Conference. And what that means for this district is that these trustees are taking time and their personal lives, traveling all the way to Orlando to get new innovative ideas to bring back here to Galena Park I S D. So thank you guys very much. Noe, please raise your right hand, put your hand on the Bible, if you have to me. I, Noe Asparza.
I, Noe Asparza.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of Galena Park I S D trustee.
Of Galena Park I S D trustee.
Position six of the state of Texas.
Position six of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and law of the United States.
Constitution and law of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help.
Congratulations. If you guys don't know Norma, she has a wonderful, beautiful daughter that is a anchor on her local television station, so she got it on. Please, please, after me. I, Norm Hernandez.
I, Norm Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Galena Park I S D trustee.
Of the office of Galena Park I S D trustee.
Position seven.
Position seven.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and law of the United States.
The Constitution and law of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And so Jose and I have been friends for, oh, my goodness, way before this bullying stuff started. Thank God there were no cellphone cameras.
Recent graduate. Congratulations to all the trustees being sworn in, and we got to find that footage of Judge Joe and Jose. That may be interesting.
I'm sure you have some stories.
We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
All right, so Joe stole a little bit of my thunder. I'm supposed to recognize all the elected officials, and he already did about half of them, so. Is it Alfred Gonzalez from Commissioner Adrian Garcia's office? If you'll wave. Hi there, sir. Of course, Commissioner Adrian Garcia. Retired Judge Mike Parrott. Carmela Garcia, J C City Council. Cindy Miller and Sandra Zamarepa from Commissioner Adrian Garcia's office. Hey, did you, did you leave anybody at work? And of course, Judge Joe Stevens, y'all all know Joe, and he just finished up his deal, so. So once again, thank y'all so much for coming and spending your evening with us. It's really nice of you. I'm sure there was things you had to not do in order to be here, so we appreciate it. We'll move on with our recognitions. I will tell you guys this, it's really hard to get kids here this time of year, right? So we had more kids invited, but we, we only have a few here, so we're going to honor them, and we will continue to invite them, but you know, should I go to a board meeting or should I go to Splash Town? So, so we lost on some of those, but anyway.
Good evening, trustee Ramon Garza. Would you please join us for tonight's recognitions? This evening's recognitions will begin with the recognition for the Galena Park I S D Energy Management Department. Representing the department are Zachary Fay, Director of Energy Management and Utility Services, Harold Sonny Fletcher the Third.
Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facility Planning and Construction; Mike McKay, Assistant Superintendent of Operations; Charles Miller, Director of Maintenance; Dr. Sonia Nizey, Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support and Chief Financial Officer; and Molly Walden, Secretary for the Department of Operations. The team worked together to be named the 2023 Texas Energy Managers Association Program of the Year. Texas Energy Managers Association promotes the responsible use of public funds through energy management and sustainability, and the GP ISD Energy Management Department has reduced the district's energy consumption and increased utility incentive money. Thank you for helping Galena Park ISD lead the way to responsibly using energy. Please give them a hand. Next, Galena Park ISD recognizes Ms. Canice Washington, Galena Park Elementary School's science lab teacher. And joining Ms. Washington is her principal, Mr. Jaime Rocha. Mrs. Washington received the 2023 HEB Excellence in Education Award in the Leadership Elementary category. The HEB Excellence in Education Award honors outstanding public school professionals and thanks them for their dedication and commitment. Ms. Washington goes the extra mile each and every day to educate and support her students and the Galena Park ISD community. Congratulations on this incredible honor. Our final recognition for the 2022-2023 school year is our favorite kind, student recognition. The Texas Art Education Association 2023 Visual Arts Scholastic Event awarded artistic talent from three of our campuses. From Galena Park High School, Alma Viegas. From North Shore Ninth Grade Center, Yahida Leon Lotta. And from North Shore Senior High School, Edith Gonzalez. And with the teachers and administrators, please join them on stage. The mission of VICE is to recognize exemplary student achievement in the visual arts, and these outstanding students represent academic excellence accentuated by personal interest. Congratulations again. Thank, thank you.
Any Board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or Board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
Yes, I do. First of all, I would like to commend Liz Layler, Michelle Elfes, and anyone else who assisted in the new graduation design at North Shore Galena Park and early college graduation. I believe it went quite well, and I want to say kudos to all who were involved. Thank you very much.
I do want to say something. I'm going out as the, as your president of the Board, and I want to thank my Board for allowing me to lead you and facilitate through difficult conversations and decisions that we had to make. I also want to thank the Superintendent that made, made this job very easy for me, and I want to thank my family, Judge Joe Stevens, my kids, for allowing me to serve in, at this capacity. I also, when we have questions, I also want to recognize all the administrators that go and get all the information for us. We thank you and we appreciate you. And especially, I want to thank Ms. Elizabeth Valdez for, for keeping us together. I want to say, I, my mind is going 1,000 miles per hour. Sometimes it takes for her to put it on my calendar, call me that morning, and then call me an hour before I'm supposed to show up, and she will do it.
Yes, yes.
She keeps us straight on our conferences, on our meetings, and I, I don't think that people know what you do and how much we appreciate you. So thank you so much. All right. I don't, I don't want to cry.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to congratulate the new Board, the returning Board members, and to my whole friend Jose, who I've served on many committees with. Welcome aboard.
All right. Anyone else? All right. We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Okay, sorry. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program construction update.
Thank you, President Stevens. Fourth, Captain, Dr. Moore, of course. My apologies.
Is the mic on? The mic's on now. Summer construction mode. Here we're Phase Two of Pyburn Elementary. The picture on the right, you can see those are the columns that support the Phase One that we just moved into, and then grade beams going in on the column on the, on the picture on the left. Of course, Galena Park High School Phase Two steals up, and that's the parking lot that'll now be to the south and west of the campus, the new parking lot, for the parking that we removed along the street. I believe had questions about that in the past. Going along very nicely there, very happy with the progress there. For our summer work, we're re-roofing. Complete tear-off there of Building B at Woodland Acres Middle School. And these are the most exciting pictures, I believe. Here at Purple Sage Elementary, improving the indoor air quality, HVAC upgrades, but there are new air handlers in those pictures, so very important. If you remember from the facility condition assessment, getting those air handlers replaced and improving the indoor air quality. Also at MacArthur, new chillers going in there, improve the indoor air quality there as well, and other air handler HVAC upgrade. And then equally as exciting, North Shore Middle School boiler replacement. Not quite as important in the summer, but very much important in the winter. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you.
All right. With respect to the general consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Noe Asparza, as far as a second, the motion.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Noe Asparza. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take agenda as is?
I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Norma Hernandez.
I, Norma Hernandez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Norma Hernandez. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Linda Sherard, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Wanda Johnson, second the motion.
A motion was made by Linda Sherard and seconded by Wanda Johnson. All in favor? The motion carried seven to zero with zero abstention, abstentions. The following documents were presented to the Board for information. Dr. Sonia Nizey, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for the, for Operational Support, presented Tax Collection Report for April 2023; 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of April 30th, 2023; Mrs. Liz Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented Early Head Start 2021 to 2022 Annual Report; Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes from April 2023; Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary from April 2023; there being no other business before the Board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:37 PM.